Twenty one, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. This meeting is being held in accordance with the government of Massachusetts' March twelfth, twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, chapter thirty A, section twenty. No public attendance will be permitted in person. The public can access this meeting via WebEx technology. Until further notice, the Burlington School Committee will hear public comment virtually only. Meetings are also broadcast live on Burlington Public Cable Access TV. For those joining us via WebEx, the the meeting number access code is two, three, three, seven, three, zero, three, eight, nine, two, eight. The meeting password is Tuesday. Also, for the record, those who may join us during either public participation or in any warrant agenda item is limited to a three minutes. That's the school committee policy is three minutes limits on public participation. And I've also been asked to just clarify that any public participation questions and things of that nature can't be offered via Facebook. They have to be done through the WebEx portal because that's the way this meeting has been publicly noticed. So with all of that being said, we'll move on to the first item on the agenda, which is the approval of the warrant. Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded to approve the warrant as submitted, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair abstained, so four, zero, one. Next item is the approval of the minutes from the September twenty eighth meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved, sec.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the September twenty eighth meeting as submitted, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes five, zero, zero. And now we do have time for public participation. If there's anybody who would like to bring something to the school committee's attention that's not otherwise on the agenda, now's the time to to do that. And Mr. Kuhn was telling me that there were no hands remotely showing, so we'll move on to the next agenda item. Oh, sorry, somebody did. Maria Sturdervant.
Hi, um.
Hi, Maria.
Thank you. I don't.
Whoops, whoops, we lost her.
Is it possible for you to hear me?
We we lost you there for a second, Maria, but I think you're back.
Okay, um, all right. So my name is Maria Sturdervant. I'm a parent of a senior at the high school this year. I just wanted to talk about the COVID numbers that have been reported at the high school since we started in Labor Day, right before Labor Day. I just want to preface that this information is based on emails from Principal Larkin and Dr. Conti. I believe that nine thirteen, there were two positive cases, nine twenty-three, one positive case, ten-four, the test and stay was implemented, and on ten-eight recently, there were two positive cases. The number of cases have been extremely low based on Dr. Conti and Principal Larkin's emails. I hope you would agree. It seems like we have it all well under control, and I don't see a reason logically to enforce a vaccine mandate, which I think some people think might be on its way. Based on data as of ten-seven within the Burlington, for town of Burlington, we have seventy-five percent vaccinated students ages sixteen to nineteen. Again, with the numbers as reported and the percentage of students that are already vaccinated, it's not even including those that are partially vaccinated. The numbers are low, and a vaccine mandate should not be warranted, especially if a student is willing to test and show that they do not have COVID. I'd also like to make you or bring your attention to winter sports. Last year, we played with higher rates of COVID in our community, and there was no vaccine at that time. As I'm sure you know, we had a very successful year with sports. I know personally that the girls' basketball team remained undefeated and won league championship. There were no canceled games due to COVID, and our spring sports girls lacrosse team also finished undefeated with no games canceled by Burlington, and they were undefeated as well. This shows that we were able to successfully complete our sports seasons last year with even higher rates and again, no vaccine. So I don't believe there's a reason why we couldn't do that this year. So to enforce any kind of vaccine mandate is actually encouraging, I believe, exclusion, segregation, it's discriminatory as well as unconstitutional. Based on what I know, this is not the message that Burlington High School would like to convey, and our educators as well, or our community to our students. I'd also like to add, at the high school, as you know, comes with a lot of pressure on our kids, well, not just at the high school level. The effects of COVID on our kids' mental health is already taking quite a toll on them. Many have suffered feelings of isolation, and so the sense of normacy to be back in school is great, and I hope the school committee would value our kids' mental health as a top priority. Our kids look to their extracurricular activities as a social outlet, and they need that mental break to be able to participate in activities that they love, be it sports or theater, et cetera. If the school were to enforce a vaccine mandate, and again, I don't think it's on the table right now, hopefully not, it would create an even wider division of social hierarchy within the school with an undesired effect of bullying and isolation even more on our students. Implementing implementing a vaccine mandate and segregating students or not letting them participate in extracurricular activities based on their vaccine status will only exacerbate already existing social problems in our school and create an even bigger divide. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Maria. Thoughts? Is there anybody else out there for public participation?
Mr. Chair, you know it's outside of protocol. Could I just ask a clarified question?
Sure.
Ms. Sturdervant, can you hear me? I just want to make sure you can.
Say can.
This is Eric Conti. The vaccine mandate you're concerned about, again, the one we've discussed is for employees. The one that you have primarily expressed concern about is a is a student vaccine mandate. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank, thank you.
All right, if there's nobody else from public participation, we'll move on to item five on our agenda, informational reports. Any subcommittee reports anybody have to bring forward?
CPAC has no updates this week.
Okay. Anybody else, subcommittees? Martha?
I don't have any subcommittees, but I, this sort of announcements, I guess, and I just wanted to congratulate the marching band for going, being back in person and in their competitions. And, you know, I know that last year there were no competitions for the marching band. So congratulations, and I'm looking forward to seeing the show at halftime sometime this fall.
Thank you. Ways and Means, anything, Roger, if you're there? No, apparently not. Student representative. Brooke here this evening? Hi, Brooke.
Hi.
How are you doing?
Good.
Good. You got any kind of report for us of anything going on?
Uh, yeah, we had our first, like, whole club student council meeting today, and the grades kind of just said what they're like planning right now. So seniors pretty much are trying to plan homecoming. The juniors just got their prom approved and are looking to start fundraising. And the sophomores are also starting to fundraise, and the freshmen haven't really had any updates because they haven't done much since they just got elected into student council.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Brooke? Welcome, welcome to the committee, Brooklyn. So here from the bottom of the year, Christine.
Brooke, keep us updated on those proms. It's exciting to have them back.
I will.
Brooke, how much attention do you really want us to pay to freshmen? It came across.
They never have much.
All right, thanks, Brooke. Item six on the agenda, learning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just wanted to highlight for the committee and the community that we reorganized the headings a little bit to parallel with the Planning for Success document. So this committee is well aware that we have four strategic objectives in terms of our planning. And so those strategic objectives are learning, equity, and then thriving, which sort of have a, it has a culture and relationships piece to that word. And that word is chosen specifically because it does show up in the committee's equity statement that you all developed. So I think it's important that we prioritize that. And then facilities and finance. Not everything fits into a category perfectly, and there are some that may be covered by two, which is why they may be listed twice. So you'll see the Burlington report listed under two. But we're going to condense all of that so that people don't have to wait in the agenda, if that's okay, Mr. Chair, for us to to do so. So again, under learning, we're going to try to feature for the committee different schools, different levels every meeting, so we keep the focus on what our focus is on learning. So with that, we have Mr. Sullivan here from Burlington High School. Mark, thanks for making time. Mark is going to talk about the schedule, sort of an advisory program, some parent outreach that's happening through the guidance office, through the counseling office, I'm sorry, not the guidance office, and some of the summer reading programs. So, Mark, with that, I will, I will turn it over to you. And again, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Dr. Conti, and Mr. Adabato, Mrs. Janovitz, and Mr. Jackling are with us tonight. I think they'll be able to better talk about a few of the things that I'm going to mention only because they are intimately involved in the work on a daily basis. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here and just highlight a few things that are happening at the high school. You know, Mrs. Monaco just mentioned proms. It's really exciting for us to be getting back into the normal flow of things at the high school, and that includes both, you know, school academic programs, classroom activities, extracurricular programs, parent programs that we have. You know, I know the last year was difficult on everybody, but these are the things that we we really know how to do well. And it's just nice to be able to to be getting back into these routines, and I'm happy to be here tonight to to share a couple of things that we're working on that are not only, some are new, but some are existing programs that it's good reminder for the school committee and folks in the community to to be reminded that we do. So the first, I believe Mrs. Janovitz is here. If she could just let me know. If not, I'll go to one of the other folks first.
I'm here.
Great, great, thank you. Mrs. Janovitz, are you with anyone else, or is it just you?
Just me.
Okay, great. So one highlight for me every year is our our summer reading program. I believe two thousand eighteen or nineteen was the first year that we implemented this. Mrs. Janovitz, our math department head, Mrs. Whitcomb, and our high school librarian extraordinaire, Mrs. Callie Graham. They work year round putting this program together. And I'll let Shannon talk more about the details, but I have the opportunity every year to run a book group as part of this program. My book this year was No Ordinary Dog. It was a story about a Navy SEAL, Will Chesney, and his experiences serving during during the Iraq and Afghanistan war. And I had a terrific group of kids that I was able to to go over the summer reading book activities with. And every year, Shannon and her team, they work to identify a theme for the summer reading program, and that theme ties back into one of our core values. And this year it was empathy. And in particular, how do people in the text work to understand the experiences of others? One of the, was one of the main driving, driving concepts that we looked at. So Shannon, I'll let you talk a little bit more about it. So, thank you.
Thank you. So we did, we did start this a few years ago. We're using the one school, one question model. So this year's question was based on the core value of empathy, and it was, how do we build a culture of empathy? So students get to recommend books in the spring, and faculty gets to recommend books, and we put together a list of thirty nonfiction and thirty fiction titles. And then each student gets to choose, or they list the top three choices, and then we place them into summer reading book talk groups based on their choices. And then, as Mr. Sullivan said, everybody in the school is allowed to run a book talk group. So the focus is on really building relationships with students at the beginning of the year, giving teachers an opportunity to work with students in a way they may not necessarily do. It's not really evaluative. It's mostly about just talking about something of interest to you and really supporting the idea of reading for pleasure. We want to model that for students and and to show that faculty, staff, that everybody is a constant learner, and reading is is part of our lives. So it seems to be a success. We have really enjoyed it, and we're already working on next year's summer reading by collecting different titles that we think students will enjoy.
Thanks, Mrs. Janovitz. I think she's downplaying it a little bit. I would call it a great success. Always a lot of positive feedback from students and from staff, so they they just do a terrific job. So thanks, Shannon.
Thank you.
Next is, Mr. Jackling is here. We have, I've, I think, been to the committee for the last three years, and we've been talking about this as part of our new high school schedule that was supposed to be implemented in the fall of last year but got derailed due to COVID. So part of our new schedule is we have built-in advisory time, and our advisory program is meant to enhance the experience for for students and for staff, to help build connections, you know, incorporate different themes on issues that might be impacting the student body or the community. It really is meant to be a community building tool, and Mr. Jackling can highlight some of the staff that have been working with him. But the implementation so far, I feel, has been positive with any, it's a, it's a large initiative. It's a school-wide program. Obviously, we have over nine hundred kids, over a hundred staff members. So like any new program, it's not without its kinks. But we went into this fully acknowledging the fact that it wasn't going to be perfect. Obviously, our goal is to make it as impactful for students and staff as possible, as culturally sensitive as possible. And we are constantly in real time tweaking the program to meet the needs of all kids and and staff members, but also already working proactively for different changes that we are going to implement next year. So, Matt, I appreciate you coming tonight. If you could just update from your perspective?
Yeah, thank you very much. So I just wanted to say thanks for having us tonight. Our advisory program took off a few weeks into the school year this year, and with the goal being to run consistently every Thursday for a thirty-minute session. With that, our full staff and all students have been included in advisory groups that we are executing, kind of like a connecting curriculum to start, just so we can start to get our students acclimatized to the schedule, to the process of how advisory is going to work, and also give our staff, the the advisors, some time to ease their way into the demands that this is going to place on them. This curriculum was put together over the past over twelve months, probably about a year and a half now, by Sherif Point from the world, from the history department, Sarah Berkeley from Bridge, Bonnie Nichols, Chrissy Whedon, Chrissy Robinson Conceason, and then also Sally Deliano. Her work over the summer really helped supplement kind of our approach as we move into the fall. So we've had a lot of people been working on this curriculum over the last, like I said, twelve months to to really create an opportunity for staff members and students to connect in a way that kind of takes the academic assessment out of the equation, where it's much more about just creating a community within the school so that our students feel more welcome, so that our staff can interact with people who are outside of their discipline, and so that we can create more connections between the adults, the kids, and, you know, kid to kid, adult to adult. And so far, since we've started, we've gotten a lot of positive feedback just with, one, the opportunity. You know, when we talk about a lot of the the issues that are, that any school faces now, one of the bigger challenges is creating time to address that. And the time that we've created in our new schedule, where we have this luxury now of being able to utilize that time for things that we think matter to our students and for things that can really help build that culture out. So we're very grateful for that. We do readily acknowledge that this is going to be an evolving program, not just this month, not just this school year, but from this point on. We know the needs of our students are ever-changing, and with that, our ability to kind of meet their needs is going to be evolving throughout that time. We're in the process currently, we've run about three advisory sessions already. We have our fourth one coming up this Thursday. We're also collecting data from students and staff after this Thursday just so we can start to get some feedback on more, you know, more voices to hear about how it's going. What are we doing well? What do we need to improve on? And we're really trying to recognize the fact that this is going to be a growing process for all of us. You know, taking on a program that's going to touch every student and every adult is a challenge. But we also think that we have people in place, and our plan over the long term is going to really be including more and more voices into the process as we start to figure out what works and what doesn't, and how we can make it better throughout the year. So, so far, so good, but obviously, we are looking to improve every time. We talk about it every time we meet. But so far, we're very happy with just the ability to to have this program. And and thanks to school committee for for supporting this as we went into that.
Great, thanks, Matt. And administrations also involved in this, I have an advisory group. I I'm paired with Mrs. Anderson, one of our business teachers, and Mr. Sheehan. So this isn't just a teacher-involved initiative, but administrations involved as well, which is, again, something that I really appreciate being able to be to be involved. So, Matt, thank you for all your, your work. I think, I think Mrs. Janovitz is still here, and I just wanted to give her a shout out for another one of her programs. The BHS Writing Center is a class that the school committee approved several years ago. It obviously didn't, it didn't run last year because of COVID, but it's a course where students can sign up, and they actually man, almost like our help desk, a writing center. They had their grand reopening last Friday. Kids can drop down for tutoring and writing support. It's in the lower library at the high school. And the kids were really excited in another, another great program that Shannon has helped spearhead at the high school. So just thought I'd give her a shout out for that, too. And finally, the the parent outreach update is really a counseling department update with with Mr. Adabato. I believe he's still here. Yep, Joe.
Joe, can I ask a question before we get to the counseling? Is that okay?
That is, that's absolutely fine.
Thanks, through the chair. Mark, just stepping back for the committee, I think you've done a tremendous amount of work on student wellness that has spanned numerous years, and I think some of it has been interrupted by COVID, but the committee's been a part of these conversations. So if you go back to even delaying the start of the high school day was meant to be a wellness focus. Mark, your schedule goes from seven periods on a five-day rotation to five periods on a seven-day rotation? Again, I'm oversimplifying, but you've, you've, the instructional time has stayed the same, but you're trying to maybe slow down the pace a little bit, have longer class blocks? Is that correct?
Yeah, so we, we used to have a one to seven schedule. Students saw all seven classes during the school day for forty or so minutes, forty-three, forty-four minutes. And there was a fixed long block in the middle of the day for sixty-six minutes. Students saw that long block once every kind of seven-day rotation for their classes. We now have, I guess you would call it a modified block schedule, where students still have a seven-period schedule, but they only see five classes in a day. On Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, all the classes are sixty-eight minutes. On Tuesday and Thursday, they're all sixty minutes. And on Tuesday and Thursday, we have the flex time and advisory time built in for a half hour at nine, nine forty approximately each of those days. So the time on learning stayed the same. It was actually, I think, increased a little bit with the lack of passing time, and we got, we don't do homeroom anymore, so the time on learning wasn't, wasn't impacted.
So again, my point being is there's rarely sort of one initiative that addresses an issue.
We're looking at this holistically within the new schedule, as Mr. Sullivan said, is the built-in advisory block. We also picked up some instructional time. Mark, we did get a question on sort of the the midterms and finals question. And again, I think you you clarified that very well, but if you wouldn't mind clarifying that again for the committee, given the new schedule and the format.
Sure. So for mid-years and and final exams, we used to have a dedicated special schedule for those, for those times during the, during the, during the year. The week after Martin Luther King, in January, those four days, and we had five days at the end of the year. What we have found in a lot of our courses, teachers are moving away from traditional exams, you know, sit-down ninety-minute exams. They're moving towards project-based learning, you know, more frequent assessments to check on student learning. So we didn't eliminate student, teachers' ability to give assessments or to test. A lot of teachers will still be using that in their quarter-end assessment of of student learning. But by eliminating that special schedule, we were able to add nine days of classroom instruction days back into the calendar, which, you know, obviously, from, I think, from the school's perspective, and not everybody agrees, obviously, with anything, but those nine days, I think, are more impactful towards student learning than days when students might come in for ninety minutes for one or, one or two days twice over a five-day period because most of their courses weren't administering traditional exams anymore.
Exam is warranted, then they have the longer block to to do that, but not a, not abbreviated day.
Right, so every. Every teacher would see a kid for at least sixty-eight or sixty minutes over the course of the seven-day rotation. So if they wanted to administer, and a lot of teachers are still, that would have administered a midterm or a final in the traditional format, are still going to administer an assessment of that nature. They're just going to do it, it's really more of a scheduling issue than it is a changing teacher's ability to assess in ways that make sense to their courses.
Chris?
Mark, I've heard some confusion in the, in the public realm about that. Do you suppose there's a way to clarify it for parents?
Sure, I have not been asked any questions about it, so I think the first initiative they could do. Reach out to me. I haven't heard from anybody.
Yeah, it's, it's like the change in that they won't have the same short days, but they'll have, they'll still be assessed in other ways, right? Or even the same way, but, but not.
I'd be happy to forward you, Mrs. Monaco, the. Notification I sent out to families, and you can let me know if that's confusing or not.
Okay.
I'm not sure, yeah.
I, I saw. Comments and heard comments that, you know, what happened to our midterms and our finals, and I just want to be sure people understand that while the scheduling of it may have changed, the actual, the reality of assessment has not changed.
Correct. Yeah, I'd be happy to, if anybody out there had any questions, I'm always happy to answer it. They can reach out to me directly, and I will forward you that notification, Mrs. Monaco. And if it's confusing to you, you can just let me know, and I'm happy to clarify any way I have to.
That sounds good.
And again, through the chair, my, my broader point to the committee is there's, again, there are many fronts happening on the student wellness that incorporate some of the technical, which is scheduling, and I think some of the relational, which would involve, obviously, the advisory. And then, Ms. Janovitz also has talked to you about, I think, another really important relational piece in terms of the summer book study and even the student writing center. So again, I think we're, we approaching wellness, I hope you see from a, from sort of a multiple-front manner. So, Mark, thank you for doing that. And Joe, I didn't mean to insert a few questions here and to disrupt your, your momentum, so.
I wasn't, I wasn't done introducing them yet.
Okay, so go ahead.
No, I was just going to say that, you know, Joe, obviously, everyone knows him, the counseling department. A lot of different things throughout the year, and I thought it would be good for him to come. We just had a ninth-grade parent breakfast. It's one in a series of informational meetings that Joe and the counselors put on for parents. They're virtual this year, and hopefully, attendance might be a little bit better without parents and family members having to come into the building but able to access online. So like Dr. Conti mentioned, there's not just one thing that any, any department or any, any group is working on in the school. So, Joe, if you want to give an update on some of the counseling initiatives?
Sure, thank you. Thanks for having me tonight. So the the breakfast series, we're going to continue. We were able to pull it off last year. As a reminder, what what the counseling department does for some parent outreach is with our guidance breakfast series, our counseling breakfast series, we offer a different topic each month and give parents the opportunity, this year it's virtual, to hear from us, to ask questions. This most recent grade-nine breakfast was well-attended. We had about fifty or so parents that attended virtually, and we, we covered topics that were, you know, kind of in regard to the the transition to high school. You know, and and we're well aware that this ninth-grade class really, you know, had had some challenges in terms of last year, and several of them were remote. So it was a big adjustment. and several of them were remote, so it was a big adjustment coming back. So we were happy to see all the parents attend. Our next breakfast will be coming up in, coming up in a couple of weeks. This one is a senior college topics breakfast. We did have our college planning night a few weeks ago for senior parents. It was virtual. It was recorded. Thanks to BCAT, parents can access that if they choose to. But the counseling staff is hard at work right now, meeting with seniors. We're right back into the college application process, full swing. Counselors are connecting with students in a variety of methods now. Most of the staff, actually, just about all of the staff use Google Classroom now, just as a teacher would. And we push out information that way. We have small group and, and one-to-one meetings as well. So we're really kind of focused on, on that right now. And I would just say to parents, you know, keep your eyes on the, on the high school website. We have the list of the various council events throughout the, throughout the course of the school year. Other things that are happening in the, in the world of counseling at the high school, we have PSATs tomorrow for juniors, so we're still offering some standardized testing to students that choose to sign up. We'll be offering that for sophomores as well on October twenty-sixth. And I think that just gives our students a good opportunity to get some practice in, if they choose to, to prepare for, for upcoming SATs. Another new avenue to the counseling department's taking this year is we are going to be doing small groups, working with small groups of students, and it's in regard to stress and anxiety. So it's essentially our school adjustment counselor, she's in her third year, and she's been a great addition to the staff. She's implementing group meetings. She'll do that with one of the other school counselors. They'll be meeting in small groups of ten to fifteen students. They plan to do two groups per quarter. And the idea is to give certain students the, some skills to help them cope and deal with the various stress and anxiety that, that can be coming up throughout the course of the school year. So it's just a way to reach out to a certain pocket of students that really need the support. So we're very excited about that, and we, we hope to really see some improvement with, with students that participate in that. We're going to collect pre- and post-data, and then we're going to hopefully continue to expand on that. Anything else you wanted me to mention tonight, Mr. Sullivan?
No, I think that's good.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you.
Martha, I think you have a question or a comment?
I have a question and a comment. I thought I heard Mr. Sullivan, when he was introducing Mr. Adabato, mention family outreach. Is there something new and specific that you are doing that we should hear about?
I think the family outreach was more about the parent breakfast series that we do.
Okay.
Yeah, informational series for the, for the parent, yep.
Okay, and, and just, my general comment is to, thank you all, because these are really important programs. The summer reading, that's now got, it's not just a reading assignment. It's a way for kids to connect. It's a way to address issues. It's, it, it's thematic, it's thoughtful. That's really great. The Writing Center, I'm really delighted it's back running. The advisory program, I know you've worked on that for several years. And for people who are listening, the, the term advisory may not connect with anything you're familiar with, but it's just, it's a term that a lot of high schools use and middle schools for a chance for students and teachers to, to be together and not focus on the academics, but focus on other issues that schools are addressing, whether it's citizenship or responsibility or empathy and, and making those connections. And I, and then there are all the connections that the guidance department is working on. But I, I do want to just emphasize what Dr. Conti was saying is that I'm really pleased that we are trying to address students' wellness needs and their social-emotional needs in many different ways, because we all know that high school's a stressful time. A pandemic is a stressful time, and, and we need to be addressing these issues for all of our students. So I'm really glad to hear about all these programs. Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan, I want to just mention one other thing. We're going to, we're going to start off the counseling department. We had a counseling parent group that we, we did it for about five or six years. And then, you know, we, we stopped a couple of years ago. I think it was partly just because of COVID. But we do plan to pick that up, so any, pick that back up. So any parents listening tonight, keep your eyes out for an email from the counseling staff. It's, it's basically a, a, a good way for the counselors to educate parents on what we do and for us to get feedback from parents. So I wanted to make sure I, I mentioned that as well.
Anybody else have any questions or comments on Mr. Sullivan's report? Mark, thank you very much. I thank Mr. Adabato, Mr. Jackley, and Ms. Janavitz also for joining us and for all of your hard work. Dr. Conti, is there anything else that?
No, just similar gratitude. And for the committee, we're going to be, again, trying to feature different aspects of the district under learning. If you have any particular program or area you would like to hear about, just let me know, and we'll try to organize it. But you can imagine a future meeting where maybe we'll have some elementary folks here and then have some middle school folks and maybe have the preschool. So just, so we have a, again, a focus on learning. I think, I feel like for the last year, year and a half, we've talked a lot of logistics. And so I'm trying to get us back in the habit of talking about why we're, why we're here. So Mark, thank you for kicking us off. Joe, Matt, Shannon, thank you very much. So there's a.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item B, Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This involves a memorandum of agreement, or MOA, between the Burlington Educators Association and the Burlington School Committee for the 2021-2022 school year. Again, this is not the main contract or the main table contract, as it's told. As it's, as it said, I think we have Patrick Murphy on the call somewhere. Again, not looking for his input. He's certainly welcome to give some. I just wanted to thank the, the BEA through Patrick. I think it's, it's a lot to work all day and then bargain after that day. I want to make sure I thank Mrs. Monaco and Ms. Simon for also participating in that. And while we were, I just think it's important to note is while we were talking about some important working condition language, everyone was still showing up to work and, and doing their job. So I just, it's, I want to express some gratitude. The MOA was shared with the committee. I'm not sure if Ms. Simon or Ms. Monaco want to say anything specific to it, but, and I just feel like the committee should support the MOA as we move into the full, the full contract negotiations.
Chris.
Just briefly, it, we negotiated quite a bit, and I think we came to a good agreement. And I appreciate all of the effort put in by the BEA as well as the, on our side of the table, it was Martha and Eric, Darren, and me, and Nicole, right? Thank you. And a lot of, a lot of good input, a lot of hard work, and I think it's a good memorandum.
Any further questions or comments? Martha?
I want to reinforce what Mrs. Monaco just said. I think that the negotiations were, you know, people were really serious and sincere, and I, I'm glad that we were able to come to an agreement. I do have one question about the document that's in front of the school committee, because it refers in number six to some forms. And I just want to make sure that we have the forms that it refers to. And I'm having trouble finding the document on my, on my, here, on my email. But it, it, there's, I believe it's under six.
For the exemptions?
Yeah, it's for, yeah, the, the proof of vaccinations. And I just want to be sure that we have the forms that we say we have.
Yes, there is a, there's a, a link to a Google form that is sort of the official district form for notifying human resources and for sharing your vaccination card or your proof of vaccination. And then Joanne also has forms for the other exemptions, so we're going through the same process for everybody. So, and that's handled through the human resources office.
Thank you. So I, I would encourage the committee to support this MOA and vote for it.
Okay, the chair will entertain a motion if somebody wants to make one.
I'd like to move that we accept the MOA as presented. I'll second it.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, and pass it unanimously. Moving on to item seven A, Dr. Conti, financial aid policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, under the heading of equity, we have a financial aid policy with the first reading. Nicole Kasha is going to join us for this. Really started from conversations within the district about curriculum-based activities that we usually do some fundraising for and, but there may be, there's sort of a short and long-term need here. There may be some students who need some short-term assistance. And then, long-term, as we plan these curricular events, we need to work with, make sure we work with our boosters and everyone else to rethink how we're approaching the, the costs of some of these events, especially if they're, again, connected to the curriculum during the school day. And because even if there is a fundraiser, a student's opportunity to even participate in the fundraiser may be something that is, that is limiting. So clearly, we don't want to limit access. So we were talking in the short term as to how to support these students. I think in conversations with Nicole, she was saying that in the business management circles, there are policies that allow and to define financial aid. And this is a first reading that's before you. So again, Nicole, I didn't want to get too much into detail, but the, the policy is coming out of the business managers' group, or you, you helped put this together to make sure that there's a process in place. So in the short term, we can help students. But again, the idea is over time, we would sort of change how the trips are organized and funded. But then this policy would be in place if, if we need it. So Nicole, how'd I do?
Through the chair, very well. So as Dr. Conti said, we really, I guess, in the, in the town of Burlington as a whole, don't, don't actually charge a whole lot of fees, with the school being no exception to that. And I think that the demand for this policy was increased as we strive to continue to meet, you know, the highest level of equity and inclusion within our schools, part of which is qualifying families for relief from certain costs for students to participate in, in certain activities. And just a few things I wanted to note, that this policy was written to be inclusive of if we ever did start implementing fees for, for anything else, that, you know, we wouldn't have to wait to amend, you know, a policy to provide families with, with relief to any of those costs. In that, this policy also takes into account our McKinney-Vento, which is our homeless population, students that are in foster care, active military families, et cetera, which allow for those families' determinations to be free. And in addition to the income thresholds that are currently applied for free and reduced lunch, instead of just using those as our qualifier to allow for families to have relief from some of these fees. In the policy, you'll see that we have increased them from, from those basic guidelines. So for instance, for, to be free, it's actually over, less than two-hundred percent. So it, it more than doubles the federal poverty guideline that would, that would normally be taken into account.
Thank you, Nicole.
So again, this is a first, this is a first reading. So if people want to spend some time with it and ask some questions, we would certainly get you the answers before our next meeting. And although this does incorporate the, the future possibility of there being fees, I clearly don't support that position. So, so I just think it's, it's meant to be an inclusive policy. And again, Nicole put some time into it. So thank Nicole for her time. But again, this is a first, a first reading.
Okay, so if anybody has any questions over the course of the next couple of weeks, you certainly can contact Nicole or Dr. Conti. This is the first reading, so we will, we'll vote this at the, at our next meeting.
And through the chair, we can post it as a first reading. So if people want to read it and make comments, they can do that as well. So I'm sorry, Ms. Simon, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's related to my comment. So you'll post it on the district website under district policies or under school committee?
We can do it both places and say for first reading.
And I'd also like to be sure that we send it directly to our Ways and Means Subcommittee, so that they have a chance to look at it and give us any of their input. And if anybody does have suggestions, especially from our Ways and Means Subcommittee, please, if you, I'm interested in knowing what your questions might be, if you have any, before our next meeting. So I would have advanced notice. Thank you.
Chris.
Nicole, are you still there?
Yes.
Could you explain something to me? When you look at the chart and it says income level over poverty guideline for household income, and the first one clearly is below two-hundred percent. But could you give me some sort of an example on the, the seventy-five and the fifty reductions?
Sure, so if we say the household, a household size of two, so one, one parent and, and one student, the federal poverty guideline for that is seventeen thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. In order for it to be free under, under this policy, that family of two, the, would have to be under two-hundred percent, which is thirty-four thousand eight hundred and forty. For a seventy-five percent reduction, the family of two would have to be, make less than fifty-two thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. And for the fifty percent reduction of fee, the family of two would have to make less than sixty thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars.
Okay, so what was that poverty level number again?
The federal poverty guideline for a household size of two, according to the USDA, is seventeen thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. So we've, we've upped that in order to allow these families for, for reductions.
No, I can't even imagine. Especially in Massachusetts, it seems like the poverty level should be a lot higher than that.
If it's a federal guideline?
Yes, I get it. Okay, thank you for the explanation. That clarifies a lot.
Of course.
Okay, so that's the first reading, and we will revisit this at, at our next meeting. Thank you, Nicole. Next item, Dr. Conti, vaccine policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, in the, I guess, concurrent to the MOA being bargained, there were some dates that were updated, and the committee members on the negotiating team suggested that we take the policy back to the full committee to sort of hi, make sure we highlighted those dates and to make sure that we updated the policy to reflect the MOA. And I just want to make sure I'm explaining that correctly. Ms. Simon, I see you're nodding. So, so again, the background is based on the MOA between the Burlington Educators Association and the Burlington School Committee. The following changes are being suggested to the vaccine policy. That was adopted September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. My understanding is Darren was involved in making sure that this language was consistent. So again, you have a copy of the policy in your packet. But just to highlight, the proof of at least, the first vaccination is being changed from October fifth to October nineteenth. Proof of the second vaccination, within one day after receiving the second, is being changed from November second to December first. And then consequences for failure, Darren put in some clarifying language that, again, the committee has in the new policy. And there's really no other substantive changes. So again, I believe the intention of bringing this back before the committee was to just make sure the dates are corrected and some of the language clarified. But again, just if the full committee has concerns or questions, we just wanted to have that conversation publicly.
Okay, just to get it on the table, chair will entertain a motion to approve the updated and modified vaccine policy. It's currently before us on our agenda this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Okay, discussions or questions? Chris.
Just a brief explanation that the date had to be moved to the nineteenth from the fifth to make. the date had to be moved to the 19th from the 5th to make everything work in the MOA. So it's not a big deal. It's just an adjustment.
Martha.
Also, when we voted on it at our last meeting, we didn't have the document in front of us, and the words weren't clear. And we had talked about potentially having a vote again. And so this is slightly updated based on our, we also discussed that, you know, we also had bargaining obligations, and so we, we have completed that. And so this is hopefully a final policy for as long as it needs to last. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes unanimously. All right.
Mr. Chair, under equity, I had a question, if I could raise it. I, I mentioned to Dr. Conti earlier this week, last week, Mrs. Colburn from the Special Ed PAC had asked a number of questions. And I don't know that we need to have them all announced here tonight, Dr. Conti, but I wanted to be sure that the questions were answered. And the two I remember is our parents being notified if there are no bus monitors available for the safety of their children.
Okay, and the second?
And the second one I remember is that where some students with behavioral or medical issues may not be able to wear a mask. It, it didn't seem like, from what I got from the question, it didn't seem like it was completely clear to the families that, and are all of those examples and incidents being addressed, obviously individually, but is that being addressed?
Again, I believe they're being addressed individually. And again, if they're not, then certainly people can let me know. I think the communication piece has been something with the bus company that we've been very consistent about. We actually have told them that I think people are understanding if they are short-staffed, but emptying out your offices and not having anyone communicate is causing more problems than just letting us know if there's something that's being late. So Bob, I just want to confirm with that. You've been very upfront with them about the need for communication moving, you know, moving forward. So my belief in speaking to Deb Clark is that has, that has improved the communication. I'm not saying the service has improved.
Right, but at least the communication.
I think the commitment for communication is helping. And we're also seeing from just the meeting today, principals communicating with principals. So Carrie Purchase is doing a great job because she's tier one, she's the first run, communicating with Pine Glen, Fox Hill, and Memorial, when she's releasing the buses, so they can better predict when the buses are arriving. So again, we understand communication's a problem. So Bob, if you want to add to that.
I don't know if you want me to add to it now or address it when it comes to transportation updates, because I have a few things to discuss.
Specifically, the communication around bus monitors who may not be available, because it's a student safety issue.
Right. So in that particular regards, one of the updates is that Trombley has now four full-time people in the office. So that includes our department manager Brian that we communicate with on a daily basis. So again, as long as four or so people are calling, that means communication can go out. That also means we can get the message out a little bit faster. So four was confirmed as of today, three as of last week. So we are seeing an increase in hired employees on that side.
Through the chair, if I could ask, do you know if they have been able to hire the monitors that they need?
Monitors are still a little bit reluctant to come on board. Then they have to get that number. I will jump to drivers and say that they have hired two more drivers. So we are up to now 16 full-time drivers as opposed to 14. And we still have two full-time spare drivers assigned to buses. So we're accommodating all 18 buses with permanent drivers as of today.
And through the chair, if, I, I noticed earlier tonight that Ms. Colburn is, was on the call, and I just wanted to see if there were other questions that I forgot that she wanted to be sure we get an answer to from last time, and I apologize that I didn't remember, if there was a third one.
That's, hand is raised.
Okay.
Hi. Yes, I'm here. Thank you, Ms. Simon. We did receive communications regarding the wind block. So there will be some future discussions about that. The mask exemption policy was something that is also, had been brought up in the past, and we're working still with the district about that. The bus monitors, I, I wasn't aware that you had hired, that they had hired more staff in the office. I do know that I personally received a call from our driver letting us know about a monitor issue. But other than that, I have not heard anything. And I haven't heard from other families reporting that there were no monitors on their buses. Sorry, what was the other thing you had mentioned?
Those were the three, the, the. Those were, I mentioned two, and then the wind block. So you are in, in communication with the schools about the wind block?
Yes, they are proceeding with the, the schedule that doesn't have the wind block in the middle school. But they're going to meet with their student council and then reintroduce the evaluation process.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right. Item eight, Dr. Conti, culture, relationships, and thriving.
Thank you. Again, that thriving comes from the school committee's equity statement. The, A, I just listed the Burlington High School highlights twice because clearly you heard about some programs that we're building, culture and relationships, the summer book program, and the, and the advisory. So, Mr. Chair, with your permission, we can really move to the Board of Health update and the COVID update and the test and stay update. I believe Mr. Larkin is, is on the call to help with the Board of Health update. And I think he can give more details on the, on the test and stay. Patrick, are you?
Yes, I'm here.
All right. Thank goodness. There's always that pause when I'm mic. So I think you had a meeting with Susan this week. And then this is our second week of test and stay. So if you want to give a bit of an update and then maybe make an announcement about the online consent form being preferred, I think that would be, is what we talked about.
Sure. We had a meeting with Susan at the, towards the end of last week. And we have another meeting scheduled tomorrow, actually, at 11:00 AM. So we're working through our initial test and stay experience. It's been an ongoing learning experience as we haven't had reliable testers show up from the company contracted by the state to run this program. So we had a couple of delays last week. We appreciate parents' patience, although the parents may not be aware because they're not there with their kids. But we did have students that were delayed longer than we would like to get to their first class of the day because we were waiting for testers to show up. We have been made aware that a CIC has contracted with some outside companies to, because they obviously are having trouble getting testers themselves. I saw an email today that we have four dedicated testers for Burlington Public Schools that are just going through their final round of clearance to be able to come to our district on a daily basis. And they'll be available to us for three hours a day to support test and stay, contact tracing, whatever we need them for. But again, that will not happen tomorrow. We do have another classroom tomorrow, I believe, that's going to need some test and stay support. And we are hoping that that will be done in a timely manner for those families that are expecting their students to be tested and get off to class. There is some other logistical things, like we've been asking for access to the database that CIC allows us to enter the, the forms into. And parents that have done their consent forms online, have, we, we can't see who's consented. So we've been relying on a third party, somebody from CIC, to tell us who's, who's got the consent forms put into the electronic consent. And we've been asking for multiple weeks for access so we can see this ourselves. So again, there's some frustration on our standpoint. I just asked that, the frustration that could end up coming back towards parents that they don't take out on school staff, because we're doing the best we can with the parameters that have been kind of put on us by an outside entity. So that's it. I don't know if I missed anything. We do have a, a link to an online consent form that, again, it's, it's better than us having to enter paper forms, but we don't have access to the database. So at this point, either one is, is not the best. I mean, there's, there's no good option for us. So sorry to be a little bit of a downer, Dr. Conti, but that's the reality we're dealing with when it comes to test and stay at this point.
That's why we start with learning. We start.
Yeah, we're, we're learning a lot.
Goes downhill from there. So the, the, again, the consent process is important, and without access to the consent, it's really hard for us to do the, the test and stay in real time. And is, is that something that they can share with us and they just haven't yet? That's, I sort of don't have that understanding, and I'm sorry I don't.
Allegedly, there's login information that we could go in and look at our own consents. And I know, and we've asked for that a couple of different times, both from CIC and from the third-party person that we spoke to last week. So that's, that's a frustration by everybody involved in the district that's working on this when, when students are, are being tested, that we don't have access to information. We have kind of got around that because of our liaison has been able to look up the consents. But if, for some reason, she's not available, when we have a large number of students coming in and parents saying that they consented, we, we can't give an instant response to whether they have or they haven't.
So again, for the committee, the test and stay is for asymptomatic. Students who are identified as close contacts, so that they can remain in school. The Binax Now test, which is the rapid test, has to be administered five days in a row. It's not a super accurate test for asymptomatic students. So by doing it multiple days in a row, you hopefully get a more accurate piece. So again, I just want to make sure that's the test and stay bundle is the asymptomatic close contact. We are discussing symptomatic testing, which happens on a much more limited timeframe. And I think the, just, testing in general is only for school-related events. So if there's a child who is identified as a close contact from a community event, they would not qualify for test and stay. Again, for symptomatic testing, there's a lot of judgment that occurs in that because there are many more viruses, vi-ri, sorry, whatever, than just COVID. If a student presents to a nurse with a fever and a sore throat, and the nurse is, has the understanding that there's some strep going around, then that student is going to be sent home. Those aren't symptoms that would allow the student to remain in school. If the student has sniffles and sort of the history of allergies, I think Mrs. Monaco used that example last time, then, then that, again, with the nurse's discretion, that test could be administered, and the child could be, again, given the right symptoms, could then be allowed to remain, remain in school and not automatically sent home. So again, the, we are implementing both. But the symptomatic testing doesn't mean that for every symptom, we are testing all the students coming up because there are times when it just doesn't make sense to do the rapid test because if the students are sent home with a fever, which they should be sent home with, then they would need to get a molecular test, typically from their pediatrician, which would be the more accurate test and the one that the Board of Health then identifies with that. But again, obviously, if the child has strep, then the strep would need to be treated first. So again, just making that distinction between asymptomatic test and stay and then symptomatic testing, which would arise from a, a student having symptoms and using that, again, given a nurse's discretion and her expertise in terms of how students are presenting.
Chris.
I think we, we should express appreciation to the nursing staff for doing all of this. And, and in the MOA, we did agree to a certain amount of compensation because it's a lot of extra work for the nurses. I think, too, that if a child goes to, all right, let me rephrase this. After going through so much with the COVID and the kids missing so much, it's really important that we keep kids in school. So if a student has a headache and wants a Tylenol, and the nurse feels that they need a COVID test to stay in school, that's great. Do the COVID test, let the kid stay in school. I know it's a lot for the nurses to have to, you know, judge all these situations. But after kids missing so much school, I really appreciate that the nurses are willing to do this and keep our kids in school.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion on this particular item?
Through the chair, could I just add something?
Sure.
Sorry. I agree with Mrs. Monaco 100%. I think the, the struggle.
Is going to be, as Dr. Conti said, if we have somebody with sniffles and a sore throat during strep. So we could potentially still test a student who is symptomatic. But I think the confusing part for a parent might be that we're still going to send them home even though they're negative. But the issue with us testing a symptomatic student in the nurse's office with multiple symptoms is that we're, we may find out they have COVID sooner because the test that we do is very accurate with symptomatic cases. So if we find out they have COVID sooner, that can help us with contact tracing. If we send them home, you know, you have a sore throat and a runny nose, we think you have strep, and don't test, two days later, we might find out that they have COVID because that's about the timeframe we're looking at sometimes for the PCR tests. So I just, that's going to be the toughest part, I think, for parents to understand that they're definitely in flu season, could be situations where we're sending kids home even though they have a negative COVID test. So that's, again, it's, I understand it's a unique situation, but I really, I think there's going to be, needs to be more and more communication just about that. We'd love to potentially do symptomatic testing if it can help us get to a COVID positive sooner. But we still could be sending your child home even if they're negative.
Happy thinking. And again, maybe we should do something in our weekly update. Again, we'll, we'll try to clarify that. Speaking of flu, with the approaching flu season, I just want to remind everyone that the Board of, Board of Health is hosting a flu clinic this Saturday, October 16th, between 9:30 and 12:30 at the Memorial School. So again, the Burlington Board of Health is hosting a flu clinic. People can get flu shots at Memorial School between 9:30 and 12:30 this Saturday. So.
Chris.
Eric, what happened to the governor's mandate on flu shots a year, that happened a year ago?
I think they were having trouble meeting their deadlines and getting everyone to comply. So they lifted the mandate. I think initially it was by the, by December, I believe. It was the end of December, if I'm remembering correctly. I'm sorry, it feels like 10 years ago. And I think they, they pushed the date a couple of times, and then they, I think they went from a mandate to a strongly recommend.
So it's not in place now?
It's not in place now. Patrick, the, there's not a flu vaccine mandate now. I believe the Mass Department of the DPH changed, backed off of the mandate.
Thanks.
Yes, it backed off.
At the end of the year, exactly.
Thanks, Patrick.
Through the chair, I, I thought we were going to discuss the vaccine clinics again, which we have mentioned in the past. And I was actually just looking now to see if I could find the dates on the website. I know I've seen them on the website. So could you remind me where? Because I looked under COVID-19 information, and it's not listed there. So that's a request. Could we have it linked to there? And where is it linked? And where is it linked right now?
Ms. Simon, I'm, I don't know.
Okay, it's under Family and Community. It says the COVID vaccine clinics. So, given that it was listed as a vaccine clinic update, you were updating us on the Board of Health Flu Clinic, correct? So, I wanted to just take this opportunity to remind people that we do have vaccine clinics for, oh, it didn't say which kind of vaccine. So, the COVID vaccine clinics are still being offered every three or four weeks in October, November, December. And they're generally at 6:00 PM or at 6:30 PM. The next one is on October 25th from 6:30 to 8:30. I went to the last one. I wanted to thank people who were coming to get vaccinated. And it was very simple. There weren't a lot of people, but there was a nurse there. You sign in the, you fill out the paper, she gives you the shot, you wait your 15 minutes, and then you can go home. So, if people are interested, the next COVID vaccine clinic is on October 25th at 6:30 in the Burlington High School cafeteria. And there are some going forward every three or four weeks that are available on the school website under Families and Community. And maybe they'll get linked to the COVID page as well. Thank you.
Okay.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
On that same page.
If you scroll a little further down, it says flu clinics, staff and students, and COVID clinics. So, it gives you the date of 26, 27, 28, 29 of October, November 1st for different schools. So, there's a lot of information on that page if you keep scrolling.
Scrolling.
Thanks, Patrick.
Scrolling.
All right, item nine, Dr. Conti.
Four, five, Christ, yeah, okay.
Facilities finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bob, how are you? So, again, this is a standing agenda item. I'm not sure, again, much has changed from your last report. But if so, love to hear about it, and thank you.
For the school building facilities update, I have no new news to report to the committee. Want me to continue down, or do you want?
No, again, that's, that's, no, that's fine. So, again, just thank you again. It's a standing agenda item, just in case, so thank you for that. And then, Mr. Chair, the next agenda item is we got a request about adding a capital budget committee member to the Fox Hill School Building Committee, sort of as a, I guess, as a permanent member moving forward. And I just wanted the committee to have a conversation. I didn't feel like I was empowered to add anybody. It's sort of your committee. And if you want to bring on capital budget at this time, I just think the committee should have that, should have that conversation.
I did see it on the, on the agenda, obviously. If we're going to take an action on it, I'd like to do it at the next meeting, almost considering this the first reading. I just have to, I don't recall whether we had capital budget members on previous building committees. And I just want to do a little research on that. I've always been concerned with committees. If they start to get too numerous, it gets more difficult and cumbersome to get things done. So, and, you know, you start letting one on, then somebody else, and it goes. So, happy to talk about it this evening, but I prefer not to take an action on it until our next meeting because I just want to go back and look at my notes on previous building committees. Martha.
I agree with you that having a committee that's too big is, can be a problem. However, I also know that in order for this building project to go forward, we are looking to have town meeting on board, the town on board. We need their approval. And I do think that somebody from capital budget, given that some of our funding is already included in the 10-year capital budget plan for the town, as far as I understand. I've looked into that before. But I do think it is an important piece of this school building committee for the decisions that get made to be supported and to move forward successfully with this project. So, I don't feel the need to decide tonight, but I think.
There can't be any meetings of this committee over the next couple of weeks. So, I just, I don't think.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. We don't need to decide tonight. But I, in addition to not wanting to have too many people on the committee, I also think it's important to have somebody in the role of capital budget because of the support that we are looking for from the town and from the town meeting and from capital budget committee, so.
Anything further on that? Or we can certainly have a more in-depth discussion and decide what we want to do at our next meeting. Like I said, I just want to double check. I can't remember off the top of my head if we had a specific capital budget member on in previous years. Chris.
I'd just like to have a chance to run it by the moderator as he appoints people to these committees. So, we can ask him, or Eric can ask him.
So, we can put that on our agenda for next time, and we'll all do a little homework, and then we can decide what we want to do.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, sir.
School lunch update.
Again, through the chair, that Bob and I spent Friday with the staff at the Memorial School. Ms. Stevens was generous enough to let us see in person the amount of work and the pace of the work to get lunches out to all the individual classrooms. I can say it was, it was significant. So, firstly, I want to make sure I thank everyone for their efforts to get the students fed in their individual classrooms. So, again, thank you. And there's a lot of steps being covered and a lot of building to cover by the cafeteria staff. And, and so, one of the things that I then wanted to inform the committee is, first of all, I've seen it firsthand. I think we're starting to have some conversations. I think the, looking at some of our mitigation factors every month is something we committed to. I'm not sure whether we can look at having partial use of the cafeteria, trying to create some spacing, but just eliminate half of the deliveries, looking at something like that. So, the, we don't want the lunch schedule to take over the entire schedule, obviously. But there may be a way that we can gradually reopen the cafeterias safely. And so, I think that's one of the things we're working on, especially at the elementary level where, again, principals are looking at some possibilities. It's a fairly condensed time, so getting kids to the cafeteria. And I'm not sure if prepping half the meals and serving half the meals is going to take more time than doing it just one way. But I think it's something that we're going to look at. There are some surrounding districts that are utilizing their cafeterias. So, I want to look at if they're seeing cases that come out of a lunch experience and what that looks like. And obviously, we would need to involve, you know, have larger conversations as well. But I think, I don't think it's sustainable for months moving forward. I think everyone is all hands on deck during sort of the start of the school year and sort of the initial concern with the Delta variant. And if we're seeing, again, cases, not seeing a whole lot of school spread, I think we will evaluate the use of the cafeterias with everything else, as we said, every four weeks. So, that's really all I have to say. Bob, I'm not sure if you want to add something. But, again, I just want to thank the staff.
Again, I also wanted to thank the staff for allowing us to serve lunch with them. It was fun, but I may have broke a sweat a little bit. So, I do agree that there's some heavy lifting and some work that gets done in all of our kitchens. But I do want to piggyback on something Dr. Conti mentioned, sustainability. So, in regards to overall our district, we're starting to see some supply limitations when it comes to just food in general. So, either delays on receiving some of that food, but also the quantities that we're looking for, so substitutions are definitely happening. What we're also starting to see a little bit is the supply limitations on the packaging supplies. And just speaking with vendors, we're expecting to see those more and more in the future. So, that's something that while we have supplies for today and tomorrow and whatnot, necessarily, we may not be able to acquire those supplies, you know, for months ahead of us, you know? So, it's just something that we need to be aware of as well, too. But I wanted to make you all aware of some of those limitations.
Thanks, Bob. Chris.
Eric, is there any way to get them any help in the schools? Like, I know in, I think it's Francis Wyman. They have after-school people coming in to help them out. Some of the schools have a more, more of a problem than others. And it just seems as though they're miserable. I mean, it's just too much. They can't make all these lunches and deliver all these lunches with the number of people they've got. It just doesn't work.
Also, I think in one of the communications we got that they're worried about a lot of the waste of food, too.
Yes.
And so, it's twofold, right? So, I'm not sure how to solve that problem either.
Well, I think the waste of food originates because they're creating the same lunch for every child and the kids aren't picking what they want. So, if they're not eating their whole lunch, and I never had that issue, that there would be then more waste, so I can certainly see that. Mrs. Monaco, we can look into hiring folks, but we're struggling finding substitutes. We're struggling finding substitute cafeteria workers even. And so, we have those jobs posted. It's not, we're not against hiring additional staff. We just need to have the applicants. The after-school program, again, really depends on the timing of the after-school program and when folks can be available. But we can look into that as well. We've already sort of expanded that as, sort of initially, but maybe we can even expand it further.
Well, I heard that you and Bob did such a great job helping them that maybe you should go every day to a school. Just saying, just saying.
And this might be a silly question to ask, but is there a way to see if there can be parent volunteers to come in and help until we alleviate that situation?
If they're vaccinated.
Is that something that we can throw out there?
TB tests and vaccines.
Possibly, so I think we could.
I'm just throwing ideas out there. I'm always thinking outside of the box.
No, 100%, and I think we could maybe have those conversations. I think ideally, we want to look at the use of the facility. But I'm sure people are seeing in the newspaper of a shortage of food supplies. I think we're all personally experiencing the increase in food prices. So, I think we are seeing that, seeing that as well. But I don't think any ideas off the table, Ms. Bond, so we should look at it all. I just don't think continuing on in what we're doing at every school is sustainable. And, again, I think Memorial would be an example of that.
Maybe you should start having some of the kids go. I don't know. I mean, I don't know the answer. I just know it's a, it's a real problem.
Okay, anybody else on that item? Seeing nothing. Moving on to 9E, transportation update. Just a corner right there.
So, I believe I gave most of it earlier, but I will repeat if that helps the community and/or the committee. Prior to this week, we had 14 full-time drivers and two spares. As of this morning, I was notified that we have 16 full-time drivers and the two spares are dedicated to buses. We have one additional spare that was hired. So, that would mean that we have 18 full-time staff and then one person licensed to drive that if there was a call-in. That person who is a spare is spared between two towns, us and Wilmington. But, again, we have 18 full-time drivers, which is something, you know, that we didn't have previously. That being said, I mentioned we have four people in dispatch. That is how we intended to start the year. And three of the people are full-time in the office. One person is filling in from another office, but it's giving us the four full-time bodies, which should obviously help with communication to myself, the school departments, and any parents that need be. Also, communication back and forth with the buses if there were issues that arise. Again, that's as of this morning, so we still have to work that out through. But we did see those drivers and staff today in their positions.
Bob, the presence, excuse me, through the chair, the presence of more permanent drivers has allowed you, you've initiated some changes on Monday as well. Is that correct?
Yep, so on Friday, we initiated some changes. We got that out to the public. We included that in the weekly update, and it's updated on the website. Those changes went into place today. It's the first time we've been able to have major changes to the route since the start of school. That did not address every single request that came in, but a majority of them. Please note that, obviously, every time we add a change or take away a change, you know, there's an effect somewhere else, whether that means more time. If we have to change the way the route goes, that's going to, you know, increase the time on the buses. It's also going to push back some other stop times. So, like I said, we updated that to the website. Now, again, the stop times are estimates. We're trying to stay on top of that as much as possible. As you are well aware of, we've had some days where buses have been late. We've gotten a lot better on that, and we're going to continue to strive to get better, to stay on time. But like I said, those changes will continue to happen. Not every change took place over the weekend, and we'll look to add more changes, you know, pretty soon.
I mean, it's common sense. Ideally, we want permanent drivers who know their routes and know their kids. And I think that's the best way to go. When we were rotating drivers and people were missing their routes and missing their stops, then that just delays things further. So, I know the first eight weeks of school, Bob, haven't really been pleasant in regards to, in regards to transportation. But I'm saying thank you, and I know PEG has put a lot of time in as well. And we are really trying to make every possible change that we can. But adding stops and wanting the buses to move more quickly is sort of counterintuitive. So, at some point, we have to make some priorities and move, and move forward. But with the more permanent staffing and with the commitment to keep the office staff, we do believe communication will be improved, and the routes will only get better moving forward. So, this normally takes place in the first, really, two weeks of school, the first week. And then when we add the kindergarten students, again, it usually takes us two weeks to shake out. Now, it's been two months, and we appreciate that people are losing patience. But we thank them for their patience.
If I could just add one more comment, please?
Sure.
Maybe this will help with information. I know a lot of my responses have included this. So, if we could just say this publicly, is that not at all trying to send the wrong message, but the bus can usually only drive down the street one way when they're going to the school and coming home from the school. And some of my requests have been to change the direction of those bus routes in order to accommodate drop-offs on certain sides of the road. In the places that we can, we try to accommodate those. But, again, if the bus is leaving from a particular school, going down a road in a particular way, it does mean that sometimes a student may have to cross a road. The bus would come to a stop first, look in all directions, open the side stop sign, turn on the lights to the bus, and then allow the student to either exit the bus. And that's how also the student would enter the bus. So, again, a lot of their requests have been made about that. And it's something that I really can't accommodate every time. But if people were to consider that when requesting some of these changes, it may make some of the requests a little less to come in. Thanks.
Thank you, Bob. Questions or comments on the transportation issue situation? Seeing none? Anybody else have anything they want to bring forward or discuss? So, good. GOL detained a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned.
Aye.